They're sick.
They're sick. Dickerson, they have strep.
Yes.
Where? They are?
Yes, they are.
I'm looking at the bottom of the line. Commissioner Cox is picking on there.
She'll want that in a minute.
She'll pick back.
I really do. I'll get him later. Okay. Rachel, are you ready to call this meeting to order, ma'am?
Actually, Mayor, we're gonna let Amy do the honors.
Okay.
All right, Mayor?
Yes.
Sarah Rabello as Mayor, sorry, absent. Sarah Dickerson as absent. Jason?
Yes, ma'am.
And Justin?
Yes.
Would you join me in prayer, please? Our Heavenly Father, we just come to you tonight and we ask for your wisdom and discernment as we make decisions that affect our city. Father, I ask for a hedge of protection over all of our citizens. I thank you for getting us through these past storms and I thank you for our staff who did such a great job and I continue to pray for them, Father, that you will give them guidance and protection as they carry out their jobs. Father, I pray a special prayer for police officers. Will you protect their six at all costs? In Jesus' name, amen. I said six in a prayer. Pledge of allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Justice for patria. Number four, consideration and action on consent agenda. Commissioners, servants?
I got a motion to accept the consent agenda.
Second.
Mayor?
Yes.
Jason?
Yes, ma'am.
Yes.
Number five would be no action. Number six, public appearances, petitions, communications, and personal appearances. Under Oklahoma law, the city commission members are prohibited from discussing or taking any action on items that are not on today's agenda. So, no action, amen. Number seven, consideration, discussion, and possible action to approve, to purchase a 2016 Ram 1500 Crew Eco pickup in number star 2322 to be used as a parks and recreation vehicle from Steve Myers for $28,500 utilizing general fund revenue as included in the fiscal year 2024 capital improvement plan.
We've needed a park and rec vehicle for quite a while. We budgeted for it this fiscal year. We budgeted $30,000 and this came up at 28,500. It's within the book range for a very clean vehicle, which it is very clean. I went and looked at it personally and I would recommend approval. The money's there. It's in the capital improvement plan and Trent will really, really appreciate it.
It's on page three of your capital improvement.
He's in a hand-me-down vehicle now, so he would...
Fix it to ask, what's he driving there?
It's a, he's driving a truck that was at the fire department, then came to me at the police department and then, what's somewhere else after me?
Shannon had it for a while.
Shannon and Animal Control had it for a while and now he has it.
It's been well-used.
It's got a lot of miles on it. No, it's like, I don't either. It's old.
I make a motion, you guys have any before I do that?
I think it's great.
I make a motion to approve the purchase of the 2016 Ram 1500 Crew Eco Diesel pickup in number 2322 to be used as parks and recreation vehicle purchased from Steve Myers for $28,500 utilizing general fund revenue as included in the fiscal year 2024 capital improvement plan.
Second.
Mayor?
Yes.
Jason?
Yes, ma'am.
Justin?
Yes.
Okay, number eight, consideration, discussion, and possible action to direct city staff to draft a city sponsorship and advertising policy.
This has to do with, or this was kind of born out of park and rec, taking, wanting to, or accepting donations and then a business puts up a banner or something on the fence that you see around? After several conversations with Tammy that she can, I'm sure she'll talk about, but it's, it can become a freedom of speech issue. So, if Bill Hardware donates X amount of dollars and we put whatever he wants on the flyer up, if some organization that is not in tune with the city of Perkins feelings or thoughts or morals or beliefs or whatever, if they want to put something up inappropriate, we may not be able to stop that. If we do a policy or procedure that puts us as the ones speaking, like Perkins Park and Rec thanks Bill's Hardware, then we are controlling what goes on the banner. That's, and that was kind of hard for me to wrap my head around when we first started talking about it.
Well, and there's, yeah, it came up in the context of an agenda item, Parks and Rec, and anytime I see the word banner, that's kind of a red flag to me. We need to stop and figure this out because the banners are speech, whatever they say on them, signs are speech, what they say on them and they're, and you have to be careful. Essentially, the way that it's easiest, and this is a very, a very broad statement, but the city can create a public forum where anybody can speak and can say what they want to say. We do that, we have lots of public forums where people can go and speak and say what they want to say. Sometimes we don't want to create a public forum and we accidentally do. And one way we might create a public forum is by using the term, and I keep trying to avoid the sponsoring a banner, sponsoring a physical something. We won't be sponsoring, we won't, I'm advising against having a program where someone sponsors a banner because then they get to pick the banner, make the banner, say what's on the banner and hang it in our, you know, in our park or whatever. And so, we don't want to create a public forum where people get to decide what speech is hanging on or located in our public areas. So, the other option is for us to always make sure that what we're saying is government speech. Public forums are, get the protections of the First Amendment. Government speech doesn't have to comply with the First Amendment. You guys don't have to let other people say things. You, you know, the government can say things for itself. So, what we're proposing is to, in these situations where they want to raise money and thank somebody by putting a banner up or I've seen, you know, there's a 5K run and they want to give away shoelaces, that seems to be the thing. We even, I mean, you think about what you're, what you're doing with shoelaces and the best way is to say, "The city of Perkins thanks Joe Optometrist for his donation to, or support or sponsorship of Parks and Rec." He's not sponsoring a banner, he's sponsoring Parks and Rec and we're thanking him by putting up this banner. We pick what's on the banner, we, we pick the colors, we make them, they're our banners.
We're in control.
Right. And so, yeah, and so, there's, there's one case on this. There's a whole bunch of law on First Amendment rights and freedom of speech. There's one out of, that isn't out of Oklahoma, isn't out of the 10th Circuit, but it's factually very similar to what, what we were talking about. And, and so, they, the court in that case basically gave us a model of what we need to do. But one of the things that, to have a broad city model is for you, because Bob and I even just, I think yesterday, came up with a different fact situation we were talking about where we're like, okay, this was the same thing, we gotta kind of apply the same thing to that fact situation. And it will work if we adopt, if you adopt a policy that regulates how things are sponsored, how things are advertised. And the, I've looked at some models and one of, one of my clients, Tulsa Transit Authority, I don't know if you've seen, but they have advertising on their buses. And I was like, well, how did they, how do they regulate that speech? And they do with a policy. It's interesting. So, the reason we put this on the agenda is because you guys are, they ultimately get to decide what the government speech for the city of Perkins is. And I really want to slow down some of the other boards and commissions and, or commissions, boards, trusts, until you guys make a policy and we can apply it citywide to these different fact situations that are kind of come up. Some of them are going to ultimately not be the board or the commission's decision, it's going to be yours anyway. And so, we need to make, we'll be working with, with those. Some of them, it will be their decisions.
When it can come up, like if the Territorial Plaza Trust wants to publicly thank somebody for donating money or property or whatever, we refer to this policy, or the Library Trust, when they're trying to raise money and build, we'd refer to this policy and that way you don't get an inappropriate entity that want, and unfortunately, this is the world we live in, that wants to put up a banner that says something...
You could have the KKK applied to, to have a mayor and you'd have to say, "We can't regulate the speech on our public forum." So, you gotta be careful.
But this way, we can.
This way, we can.
That include sponsorships of team t-shirts? They would put logos on sleeves or whatever?
I think it could be used in the...
You're saying like through the Parks and Rec?
Yeah.
It would be...
It could be part of that policy.
We'd have to look at that, how it, how it plays out and how we're playing it out. I mean, we're not buying the t-shirts. And so, I have to look at that. That's a good question.
I'm just saying, if we're gonna do it, we need to think of all that so we don't have to come back and...
Yeah.
Right, that's why, like, we just need a big, broad policy. But that's a good point. Once we, once we draft something and get it to you, you guys are going to come up with fact situations we haven't even thought about, that we need to run through our policy. So, so, we're just asking you...
Because I think it's, right, what, t-shirts and stuff, all that was donated, it's just, if we're gonna do something with signs and banners, we might just look into that.
Yeah, any kind of speech.
It's unfortunate.
Advertising.
It is.
It is the world we live in.
But if we don't, we might get a logo or something, even on a kid's shirt that the parents get very upset about, just because it's a certain type of business.
Yeah.
So, okay.
So, we just ask for a motion that staff direct this policy and then bring it back to you.
Justin, you have anything to say?
I'll make a motion to direct staff to draft a policy on sponsorship and advertising.
Second that.
Mayor?
Yes.
Jason?
Yes, ma'am.
Justin?
Yes, ma'am.
Number nine, consideration, discussion, and possible action to ratify agreement executed by city manager with MeShak, did I say that right? MeShak engineers to provide professional services for Kinder Wells drainage issues.
This was my bad, okay? But one of the things that these guys do so well is they very, very rarely bring you something to ratify because we did it without your permission. But this is, this is one of them and it was my fault. What happened here was there was, has been flooding in this development area. We, Bob has wanted to get a engineer hired to determine what the problem is, number one, and then number two, to propose a solution. And he found an engineer and we, it's actually someone we've used before, so we pulled a contract and kind of started going. And not long ago, you guys authorized Bob to do, spend up to $25,000 purchases. And in my brain, that meant he could also do, spend up to $25,000 on professional services. And I just went with it and made a signature form for Bob. And then after he signed the contract, got it all signed, I actually looked at the ordinance that said he has authority to do purchases. He does not, and purchases something, something, but not provides supplies, not professional service agreements. So, we are asking you to ratify the contract that he entered into. You've got a copy of it. It basically provides for $4,000 for a task order, number one, just determining the issues. And then there would be a task order, number two, that still, we're hoping and planning on being less than $21,000, but that will come back. So, the task order, actually, task order number two...
Task order number one is to find the problems. Task order number two would be to engineer a solution to the problems.
Well, we need, okay, so we know 4,000 is what is the not to exceed for task order number one. We don't have a not to exceed for task order number two. Will we need to bring that back to the, to the commission then?
I don't know why we would if we approved this agreement, task order agreement.
Well, we know they're just gonna have to have action after.
We'll let you know.
And it's all, it's all contained in this one agreement, task one and task two, correct?
We just don't know yet exactly how much task two will cost because they can't tell you how much the fix will cost till they figure out what...
I think waiting to bring it back would smooth things down.
Oh, no, I'm just saying, we may have, we may want to do, we'll let you know how much task order two costs, since we don't have a not to exceed in that at this point.
And the reason I, I wanted to go with this engineering firm is they're very big in the drainage and hydrology and they are basically third-party, uninterested equal to this project, so they, they don't have a dog in the fight. And I feel like we need expertise and advice on our side so we can move forward, whatever forward is, whether people comply and make the required changes or they have, or we take legal action. But I think we need to have our ducks in a row so we can take the next step should we need to.
So, I, I do appreciate your manager's report, 16 pages worth, but at least it was big font.
I find myself making the font bigger.
You can borrow my glasses anytime.
I, I like how you're being proactive on this and getting, like you said, getting our ducks in a row because that's one of the reasons I didn't call you and ask you about it because between the manager report and the agreement here, I was fully aware of what was going on. Just keeping ourselves prepared and, and having, having information.
Well, and as this moves forward, it may very well fall under the category of claim or potential litigation that will cause me to set an executive session. So, we won't, you won't need to have all the, I expect that you will not need to have all the discussions about this issue in public because it will be the type of thing that, where you may be considering litigation.
Good to know, thank you. Gentlemen, you have any questions?
Selected MeShak for the other drainage.
I think this is good.
Oh, yeah. We have previously vetted MeShak when we were applying for the million dollars in ARPA money, doing a waterline replacement project. So, we went through a big committee thing and a request for qualifications and scored their application and met with their engineers and so that we were familiar with them, I was familiar with them. But I'm, and I'm also familiar with them through the floodplain administration. Since I'm a certified floodplain manager, I go to those conferences and MeShak is really big in that organization. So, I've seen him put on, you know, talks and they deal with a lot of drainage problems.
I've had one of their reports come across.
Yes, in reference to that waterline deal.
Exactly. I, I remember them, thank you. I'll make a motion to ratify the agreement executed by manager, by city manager with MeShak engineers to provide professional services for Kinder Wells drainage issues.
Second.
Mayor?
Yes.
Jason?
Yes.
Justin?
Yes, ma'am.
Number 10, consideration, discussion, and possible action to select Roper Construction as a contractor for the city hall target hardening at a cost not to exceed $9,116 for a total contract cost of $18,232, utilizing general administration capital outlay funds as included in the fiscal year 2024 budget.
Rachel is amazing and she has taken this on from the beginning till through the end, hopefully, so I'm gonna let her cover this.
I can't remember what we've talked about with the budget or not, but this is the idea that, if you can picture the front lobby of City Hall, that we construct two walls that would come out from the corners of the desk, have a door, as you're walking in the front door, do a door and a left that would be, have a keypad as well as you could buzz it from the front desk to open it, to allow people in, do some bulletproof type glass, use some metal plates under that built-in desk in an attempt to increase the level of safety for our staff members. Also, if, when we add the wall on the right, that will actually give us another place for another workstation, which we need because we are maxed out right now. So, that's just a little bit of a bonus, but the walls, the glass, it's all about safety.
Can you start?
Well, you all have to say it's okay first.
What about the $9,000 in the agenda?
Oh, and then the reason that there's $9,000 and then for a total project cost is that we pay many of our city hall expenses, our administrative expenses are 50% out of public works, 50% out of general because we're utility building also and that's the same work being done. So, half of this would come out of general fund, regular city money, so to speak, half out of public works fund.
And the wall on the right, usually utilizing it as another workspace.
Yeah.
Is there going to be any protection for that workspace there as well?
It'll just be a wall, so...
It'll be on the other side of the lobby wall.
On the other side of the lobby wall. So, yeah, so it'll just be, it'll just be a wall.
I think the day and the age we live in...
I know.
It's needed.
It's unfortunate. Just so you have anything? I make a motion that we select Roper Construction as a contractor for the project City Hall Target Hardening at a cost not to exceed $9,116 for a total contract cost of $18,232, utilizing general administration capital outlay funds as included in the fiscal year 2024 budget.
Second that.
Mayor?
Yes.
Jason?
Yes, ma'am.
Justin?
Yes, ma'am.
Number 11, consideration, discussion, and possible action to review two letters of interest and select a candidate for Board of Adjustment to open position terms ending June 30, 2023.
We don't have anything for the BOA.
Okay.
We had one for, for the Perkins Industrial Development Authority, the next agenda.
All right, so we'll have a no action on number 11, is that correct? Number 12, consideration, discussion, and possible action to review letters of interest and select candidate for Perkins Industrial Development Authority Trust One Open Appointed Trustee Position with a term ending April 30, 2026.
Is this where they need to talk to Rhonda?
They look at the letter.
Rhonda's letter's in the packet, Rhonda is here. Sometimes she talks really soft, so you might have to perk up to listen to her.
Would you like to speak?
If you would like me to.
Come up to the podium and, no, just for the record and all the rules, just state your name to Amy and your address.
Excuse me, allergies. My name is Rhonda Jolliffe. I live at 116 South Timberline Drive and have so, pretty much off and on since 1974. That's where I'm at now. Once my mother passed, I moved in. And what else would you like to know?
Oh, that's just for the record.
Oh, we're official now.
That's, we are. Yes, we're all over here, fish. Yeah, I have to be serious in here, Rhonda. No, I'm kidding. Would, would you like to say anything to the commission?
Well, I, I love, first of all, I like how they send out the emails and all that, you know, from everything from, okay, the water's low, this is, you know? And I seen it and I thought, nah, but something just hit me, it's like, go ahead and apply. You're, you're not going anywhere. You don't have any kids in this school, you don't have to, and I thought, this is something I want to do. I might not be up there and so, I thought, well, I'll send it to, I was almost too late because I was hem-hawing around. But it's something I want to do and I want to see Perkins go in the right direction that it's going now. I mean, it has taken some curvy roads and I want to see it go, stay, stay on the straight road that it is now. You know, there's lots and, I don't know what to say. It just, it came and I'm like, and then I talked to Bob and I talked to Rochelle. Hello, Rochelle, it's good to meet you. But like I said, I've lived here since 1974. My husband and I live there and it's family home, so first of all, who's off the record, who's District Two or Seat Two for, on Timberline? Well, I mean, I'm off course, but anyway, I just want to see Perkins go in the right direction.
Okay.
And like I said, I'm gonna be here forever. I, I worked for the Stillwater Schools, but I, you know, Perkins is home. It has grown so much, but I want to see it grow in the right way and not just, you know, going the wrong way it's been in the past. I want to see it going the right way.
I think everyone in this room would agree with that, so thank you. Got some high-powered references there.
Yeah, I ignored that one or two.
That second one right there?
Yeah, you know, that one.
Yeah, I do.
Yeah.
Well, thank you for your time.
No problem. I mean, madam mayor.
It's, it's up to me, Rhonda. I've known you since 2012. Yes. Commissioners, you have any questions or thoughts? I, motion...
The next item would be to...
The next item? Yes, you're correct. So, this is a no action?
Well, yeah, it can't be.
I mean, if we got, or we're gonna be redundant? 13, consideration, discussion, and possible action to approve Resolution 9-2023, a resolution appointing at-large trustee of the Perkins Industrial Development Authority.
This would be to appoint Rhonda to that position.
Yes, good.
I'm on a motion to approve Resolution 9-2023, resolution...
Resolution appointing at-large trustee of the Perkins Industrial Development Authority.
I'll second that.
Mayor?
Yes.
Jason?
Yes, ma'am.
Justin?
Yes.
Do we need to restate that, put her name in there, or what do we do?
Yes, she was just appointed, so you will have a quorum.
Give me some more, she can't. She was just appointed.
Yeah, there's no, they don't have to accept it, so there is a quorum.
She could be on the meeting tonight and then have a quorum.
Yes.
Let's ask the city attorney.
Yeah, give me a minute, I wanna see the resolution again.
Because the city commission appoints that position.
And it's the only one that is set by resolution, the only trust.
Yeah, I'm good with it.
I think we created a problem, talked about a problem, and solved it, so...
I think you're right.
Welcome to government.
I apologize, we just weren't sure if we would have the quorum for Paida, but since she's here, she can attend her first meeting in a few minutes.
We...
I'm not going home.
We're not going anywhere yet, okay?
I'm just gonna go home and go off working.
You're gonna be part of a...
Do we have a swearing in on that?
No.
Okay.
Now, she'll have executed her oath before she takes office or before she conducts business.
We're good. We're good.
Correct. All right, number fourteen. New business. Under the Open Meetings Act, this agenda item is authorized only for matters not known about or which could not have been reasonably foreseen prior to the time of posting the agenda or any revised agenda.
No new business from here.
Number fifteen. I make a motion that we adjourn the City of Perkins regular meeting Tuesday, July 11, 2023.
I'll second.
Thank you, sir.
Mayor?
Yes.
Jason?
Yes, ma'am.
Justin?
Yes, ma'am.
Only one, Public Works, next.
Yes, ma'am.
All right, Amy, could you do a roll call and establish a quorum for Perkins Public Works Authority?
Yes, Mayor?
Yes.
Vice Mayor is absent. Sarah Dickerson is absent. Jason?
Yes, ma'am.
And Justin?
Yes, ma'am.
All right, number two. Consideration and action on consent agenda.
I'll make a motion to accept the consent agenda.
I'll second.
Mayor?
Yes.
Jason?
Yes, ma'am.
Justin?
Yes, ma'am.
Number three is a pass. Number four. Public appearances, petitions, communications, and personal appearances. Under Oklahoma law, Perkins Public Works Authority and board members are prohibited from discussing or taking any action on items not on today's agenda. Five. Consideration, discussion, and possible action to select Roper Construction as a contractor for the project City Hall Target Hardening at a cost not to exceed $9,116 for a total contract cost of $18,232, utilizing Public Works Administration Capital Outlay Funds as included in the fiscal year 2024 budget.
Rachel?
Same, same, the same thing as before? Any questions?
You want it?
Yeah, I'll take it. Make a motion to select Roper Construction as a contractor for project, for the Project City Hall Target Hardening at a cost not to exceed $9,116 for a total contract cost of $18,232, utilizing Public Works Administration Capital Outlay Funds as included in the fiscal year 2024 budget.
Second.
Mayor?
Yes.
Jason?
Yes, ma'am.
Justin?
Yes, ma'am.
Six, new business. Under the Open Meeting Act, this agenda item is authorized only for matters not known about or which could have not been reasonably foreseen prior to the time of posting the agenda or any revised agenda.
Nothing here.
Number seven. I make a motion that we adjourn the Perkins Public Works Authority regular meeting Tuesday, July 11, 2023.
Mayor, I'll second.
Mayor?
Yes.
Jason?
Yes, ma'am.
Justin?
Yes, ma'am.
All right, now Rhonda, coming up.
Yes, sir.
Can you have a seat amongst the...
The big people?
Yeah.
I'm happy here.
Well, there's a couple of chairs tonight. Got some sick young ladies.
Go in this way.
It's coming this way.
You mean, it's definitely good.
Sorry, I get kinda spread out up here. She knows I will.
I know.
Okay. Amy, will you do a roll call? Call the order, establish a quorum for the Perkins Industrial Development Authority regular meeting?
Mayor?
Yes.
Vice Mayor is absent. Sarah Dickerson is absent. Jason?
Yes, ma'am.
Justin?
Yes, ma'am.
Renee Hagler is absent. And Rhonda?
Yes. Consideration and action on consent agenda.
I'll make a motion to accept the consent agenda.
I'll second.
Madam Mayor?
Yes.
Jason?
Yes, ma'am.
Justin?
Yes, ma'am.
And Rhonda?
I have not looked at that, so can I abstain then, or is it... I have not officially looked at it, or...
You can abstain.
Can I abstain? That way, and then I get, I'll know next time to read it? I didn't know. We figure it's...
Yeah, that's fine. There's three for Paida. The quorum is established, the question is...
It seems easy to me.
It's the majority of the quorum.
Is that, or is it the majority of the board?
It's the majority of the quorum.
Something depends on how it's worded. But we'll go with that, we'll say this.
Well, look at you, Rhonda.
I should note, if you don't already, is an abstention, actually, if you abstain from a vote, it goes down as a no.
Well, then I don't want to.
But if you don't have any, your point about not having knowledge of what is there is very valid.
Yes, I'm not asking you to vote, I'm just wanting to make sure that it, that it could be approved with a vote of three, and I think it can. It's all on the cuff tonight.
They're just going willy-nilly. Then Rhonda throws an abstention in there.
I am my mother's daughter.
Where were we? Did I interrupt you?
We're getting ready to read number four.
Okay. No, you're...
No, she had to do, she needed to do roll call.
Roll call on number...
Motion. She did the roll call, that's how the abstention come out.
So, now we're at three.
She says you're correct, Madam Mayor.
Thank you.
I'm sorry, I need to go home.
Hey, Dennis made cookies and brownies.
I saw those on the menu.
Bless him.
Probably need some.
I do.
Number three. Consideration of items removed from the consent agenda. No action. Number four. Public appearances, petitions, communications, and personal appearances. Under Oklahoma law, the Perkins Industrial Development Authority board members are prohibited from discussing or taking any action on items that are not on today's agenda. New business. Under the Open Meeting Act, this agenda item is authorized only for matters not known about or which could not have been reasonably foreseen prior to the time of posting the agenda or any revised agenda.
I know of no new business, other than to welcome trustee Jolliffe.
Thank you.
Number six. I make a motion that we adjourn the Perkins Industrial Development Authority regular meeting Tuesday, July 11, 2023.
Mayor?
Yes.
Justin?
Yes.
Jason?
Yes, ma'am.
Rhonda?
Yes, ma'am.
She got to vote in the affirmative on the adjournment.
I thought we were gonna do away with the voting on adjournments. It happened to that.
I like it, because sometimes they get noisy and we have to settle down and adjourn.
I turned this off.
Thank you.
Amy, could you...
Yes.
Do the honors. Did you get all the checks signed?
Yes.
Okay, thank you, gentlemen.